TCC has something for everyone. You know, this day, this night, it's work weekend, it's in person, online, winter, spring, summer, fall. Younger, there's no excuses, you guys. Classes start.
Okay, welcome, everyone. Two or three of me talking. Is that okay? Are you ready? Okay. We'd like to welcome you to the December the 8th Board of, Tarrant County College Board of Trustees Monthly Meeting. And we have a full agenda, but we wanted to make sure that we took an opportunity to recognize everyone as they entered the holiday season. And we want to wish every one of you well and hope that you're able to get some much deserved downtime. So we'll go ahead and we have a quorum. We'd like to call the meeting to order and we'll start out with public comment. And Mr. Gates has already given me a list here. So we have Mr. John, I think it's Pete?
Correct.
Yes, okay. You want to come to the podium? Please, you'll have three minutes and Mr. Gates will be monitoring the time. Give us a moment to make sure the microphone is on.
All right, thank you.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
First time I got a chance to be in this particular building.
Thank you.
Since it was changed over to college. My name is John Pete. I reside up in Saginaw in Precinct 4649. And I want to address y'all a little bit about the permanent position you're going to offer to Ms. LeBlanc. My background is I spent 21 years in the Marine Corps. And every single one of my positions, I earned through merit. And I got a chance to take a look at y'all's minutes from your meeting on November the 8th at 9:00 a.m. You didn't have anything at all listed on this particular venue as far as any other candidates being selected or even offered a position. Okay? I think that's not good. You can, you know, take it for what it's worth, but if you don't offer it to anybody else, you're not hiring somebody based on merit. The College under this administration consistently refused to hire open faculty positions. The open faculty positions have remained open for years in many instances. The current number of open faculty positions is around 79 to 150 district-wide. These positions were open before the budget was requested by this administration. If we assigned $100,000 for salary and benefits per faculty position, the 79 to 150 open faculty positions, the administration requested 15 million more in the budget than necessary. First, why are these positions open and not filled by faculty? The chancellor was asked the questions recently in the faculty meeting. Why are we not hiring the open positions? The chancellor answered this question last week by stating, "We may not be filling faculty positions." Second, why did the administration, knowing the position was open, request the additional 15 million just a few months ago? The open positions have been funded and not used for many years. Why is this administration not hiring and funding position, most importantly? Where are the funds not used if it's for faculty salary? Third, why is the administration requiring deans to validate a need for these positions? If the positions are not necessary, the administration should not include them in the budget. The administration should have asked a question about necessity or required validation before requesting the budget. Fourth, this year is an accreditation year for SACS. To obtain accreditation, the full-time and part-time faculty ratio must be high enough to meet SACS requirements. The ratio is too low, TCC will lose state funding. With all these problems, why did the board hire this candidate without interviewing one other candidate? I've got an associate degree in professional narcotics from Embry-Riddle. I also got a bachelor's degree with a supply chain management certificate and retired out of the Marine Corps and went and worked for aerospace defense industries. And my professional term is aerospace aeronautical engineer. So hire somebody with merit, not just on, I didn't see anybody interviewed. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Pete. We also have a J.D. Pete?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Good afternoon.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you. My name is John David Pete and I moved here to Saginaw with my dad this summer. A follow-up touch briefly on my dad's introduction. We're comfortable and happy being the bookends at the opening of this session. And I know as for your agenda meetings, you guys will have the closed session for the chancellor's position. So I hope you all keep us in mind when you get to the end of this agenda. Thank you for opening us up. We'll be at the opening salvo. Follow-up on my dad, yes. As we were coming down here, our first impression of this campus is blown away, proud that Tarrant County, the predecessors to y'all and the current faculty and staff, especially the trustees, have set such a high reputation for the quality of the education those who have come here from far and wide throughout North Texas to come to this campus specifically, speaks volumes upon the due diligence of your predecessors and current faculty. And I'd hope that you all go into the agenda and especially the closed session, that you keep in mind the past predecessors and the amount of hard work, diligence, and the responsibility beholden upon y'all's shoulders should not be so callously dismissed without the proper protocols established to ensure that the merits of the person offered the position match the responsibilities and duties of that position of chancellorship. Following up on my dad, he said the associates and the bachelors, he forgot to say at the time, and I'll remind him happily, that part of his education coming out of active duty, coming into retirement, was getting classes from Tarrant County to fill in some of those easy check-in-the-box. To follow up on that, myself personally, when I left active duty, I went to my community college up in Alabama and it helped me retrograde into that civilian side so that I could learn to learn again. And I would be honored to come to Tarrant County and continue my education and to further expand my things because the hard work and diligence from your faculty, staff, and especially the trustees in the past. And I know the chancellorship are big shoes. It's not just a figurehead position. Y'all could educate me and I would be happy to listen on the hours that are put into that position. And to see it so callously and almost flagrantly pushed to the side, almost as an afterthought of offering the position without ensuring that, I guess, establishing correlative similarities for contracting side of government positions having to be vetted through a long, thorough, and almost painstaking at times process for hiring. Because it shows that the steel sharpening steel of trustees fully vetting and a thorough process to have that position filled by the best qualified candidate, I would just like y'all to remind yourselves of that when you go into the closed session. And I want to thank you all for this wonderful venue and these welcoming staff that introduced and greeted us and gave me a campus. And my little personal talk, the Student Veterans Association, the Veterans Resources Center, was very comforting to know that you'll have such a proud, strong, and vibrant veterans community. And on half of the future that we all work so hard towards for our county and for our community, let Tarrant County remain that guiding example that everybody in North Texas goes to and fights for to come to work here and to learn here. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Pete. We appreciate it. And thank you both for your service to our country. Mr. David Lowe.
My name is David Lowe and I live in North Richel Hills. A few weeks ago, I sent each and every one of you an email address, or I'm sorry, an email concerning my thoughts on Dr. LeBlanc. Not one of you took the time to respond. And so I decided I will go ahead and read the Fort Worth Weekly's article about TCC. "The Board of the Tarrant County College Has Decided to Make the Current Interim Chancellor Permanent." The board will offer a contract to Eva LeBlanc on Thursday during the next board meeting at the Trinity River Campus Boardroom 300. This action will be taken without interviewing any other candidate. TCC has the worst faculty and employee retention rate in the history of the college, under 16 years of LeBlanc's leadership, yet the board is prepared to make her chancellor. In April 2021, LeBlanc, then second in charge behind former chancellor Eugene Giovanni, was given a faculty survey that indicated campus staff had a severe lack of morale and low retention. At the next board meeting, LeBlanc presented recommendations to the board in a presentation titled Faculty Recruitment and Retention Plan. LeBlanc outlined the need to hire based on national origin and not merit. The policy is illegal under federal law and it will cost the taxpayers. Faculty retention continued to be an issue and the remarks of LeBlanc only made matters worse for the facility. The retention rate continued to worsen and LeBlanc made no effort to address the problems. The faculty provided another survey which was given to the board. The faculty was very clear about LeBlanc's hiring practice and concerns of lack of leadership. LeBlanc was given the opportunity to become interim chancellor in August 2022. LeBlanc, as provost and second in command at the TCC, allowed faculty positions to remain open over multiple budget years without informing the board or removing the budget line item. Over 100 faculty positions have remained open for multiple years. The board has never notified LeBlanc concerning this request for funding for unfilled faculty positions. Why did LeBlanc continue to request funds for unfilled faculty positions? Signed, a group of concerned taxpayers. Every month we come here, it's usually the same people. We have an issue. You raise property taxes even though you have the largest budget and enrollment is down. Then you violated the law and hired LeBlanc without interviewing any other candidates. It is time for you to represent us. You are not. You guys are basically going rogue. And you know what? Nobody really pays attention to the Tarrant County College, right? You guys are, you guys don't make the headlines. So you're able to get away with whatever you want. There is no place for racism in Tarrant County and you need to let Dr. LeBlanc leave.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. We'll take, let's see, Daniel Bennett? Yes.
Hello, trustees. I am the president. Character is what you do when no one's looking. And I want to thank the first speaker for his service in the Marine Corps. It reminds me of December 7th at Midway Island when they were attacked. One of the medal honor recipients is going to be in Arlington, stated his post and bled to death. That's the price people pay for this country. Under your bylaws, under the government code, in my opinion, this board will have violated practices outlined in the hiring of replacement of the chancellor. Even the board members have stated they did not have noticed that at the retreat, they would be asked to select the chancellor. I'm not sure how many board members knew you're going to be selecting the chancellor at the retreat. Somehow, if you feel the government code in this matter has been followed, and even if you believe the board members were aware that the selection of the chancellor was going to be done at the retreat, does not absolve you of your statutory responsibilities under state law. I specifically asked for four items related to the executive research committee in a PIA. And Ms. Bracken came out and collected that PIA from me personally and signed it, which I do appreciate that. One of the items I requested, copy of the public notice announcing and informing of all finalists for the position of chancellor, including their names and addresses. That's my right under the state code. In response, Mr. Whitstone and whoever oversaw his actions gave me copies of the agendas, which I could have downloaded off the internet. That's it. I didn't get any notice. There was nothing filed at the clerk's office. There's no stamp, nothing announcing the finalist, Ms. LeBlanc. The agendas I received was from August 9th through November 5th. Not within the response was the notice to the public. I believe that hiring of Ms. LeBlanc could expose the board, and I'm going to say this twice, okay? Because I want to be heard, twice. Ms. Ayah, Madam President, thank you. I believe the hiring of Ms. LeBlanc could expose the board to personal liability due to her stated illegal hiring practices. There is something called tort, and I've got two lawyers on this board. And immunity doesn't last forever. I believe the hiring of Ms. LeBlanc could expose the board to personal liability due to her stated illegal hiring practices. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. That's all we have in public comment, Mr. Gates? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go on into the agenda, item number three, which is the board business items and announcements. We'll start out with item 3A, approval of special meeting minutes from November 5th of 2022. Any questions or comments on any of that? Let me see. If there are no comments, questions, or clarifications, we'll entertain a motion.
A motion, proven.
Mr. Barr.
Second.
Second from Mr. Kine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Item 3B, approval of board work session minutes from November the 10th of 2022. There are some, there's just a clarification of a date that is there on your desk there for item 3B. Other than that, there's no content change. I'm understanding that it's just a date, a date change, it was a transpose, so we wanted to make sure that you had that. If there are no questions or comments on that, we'll entertain a motion for 3B.
I make a motion to approve it, as I meant to.
Okay, that is Mr. Greenhill.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hornsby. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. The same for 3C. We have approval of board of trustees meeting minutes from November 17th of 2022. Again, there's just a slight update that we need to make on a date, no content change, but wanted to make sure you were aware of that on 3C. If you have no questions or clarifications, we'll entertain a motion. So move from Dr. Morrison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Approval of, okay, we've done 3C. So we'll go ahead and go on to trustee activities and we'll start out with Mr. Barr, please, if you don't mind.
It's my privilege this afternoon to introduce to the board Jocelyn Raya, who is a student at TCC here at the Trinity River Campus. And appreciate her being with us. This is a part of the board wanting to hear from students and recognize students who are doing, who are studying at TCC at the various campuses and are some remarkable students. Jocelyn was born in California and raised in Texas. In other words, she got here as soon as she could. She's from a family where neither of her parents completed high school and she's always wanted an education. Jocelyn served four years in the United States Marine Corps and proudly completed her enlistment as a sergeant. It took approximately one year to overcome several challenges transitioning to become a civilian and then to become a college student. She's doing well. She has a 3.3 GPA at TCC and utilizes her VA benefits as she plots a course toward a criminal justice degree. Jocelyn, welcome. Would you like to say a few words?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Jocelyn Raya. And I did use to go to school with TCC in 2016, but...
If there are no comments, questions, or clarifications, we'll entertain a motion.
A motion, proven.
Mr. Barr.
Second.
Second from Mr. Kine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Item 3B, Approval of Board Work Session Minutes from November 10th of 2022. There are some, there's just a clarification of a date that is there on your desk there for item 3B. Other than that, there's no content change. I'm understanding that it's just a date, a date change, it was a transpose, so we wanted to make sure that you had that. If there are no questions or comments on that, we'll entertain a motion for 3B.
I make a motion to approve it as I meant to.
Okay, that is Mr. Greenhill.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hornsby. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. The same for 3C. We have approval of Board of Trustees Meeting Minutes from November 17th of 2022. Again, there's just a slight update that we need to make on a date, no content change, but wanted to make sure you were aware of that on 3C. If you have no questions or clarifications, we'll entertain a motion. So move from Dr. Morrison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Approval of, okay, we've done 3C, so we'll go ahead and go on to trustee activities, and we'll start out with Mr. Barr, please, if you don't mind.
It's my privilege this afternoon to introduce to the board Jocelyn Rayan, who is a student at TCC here at the Trinity River Campus, and appreciate her being with us. This is a part of the board wanting to hear from students and recognize students who are doing, who are studying at TCC at the various campuses and are some remarkable students. Jocelyn was born in California and raised in Texas. In other words, she got here as soon as she could. She's from a family where neither of her parents completed high school, and she's always wanted an education. Jocelyn served four years in the United States Marine Corps and proudly completed her enlistment as a sergeant. It took approximately one year to overcome several challenges transitioning to become a civilian and then to become a college student. She's doing well. She has a 3.3 GPA at TCC and utilizes her VA benefits as she plots a course toward a criminal justice degree. Jocelyn, welcome. Would you like to say a few words?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Jocelyn Rayan, and I did use to go to school with TCC in 2016, but my grades were failing, and that's whenever I decided to go to the Marine Corps. And I took that time to think about what I want to do for the rest of my life and for my career. And I feel like I used my time wisely, and I decided to come back to school and finish my degree. And I am going to Sam Houston next semester, and like my grades are pretty good right now, so I'll be getting my associate's degree this spring, oh, this fall, I'm sorry. But I'm excited to actually complete my associate's degree here with TCC. I haven't had like any, anything like that happen with going to school here. Everything has worked out pretty well. And I do enjoy the vet center here. I feel like comfortable there and welcomed, and the guidance counselors there always help me out a lot. They give me a lot of good information and give me good connections to what I need.
That's great. Thank you.
Jocelyn, thank you for your service, and we wish you continued success on your next journey. Thank you for choosing TCC to be a part of your educational journey as well. Yes, thank you. Anything else you'd like to mention under trustee activities?
No.
Okay.
I'll pass.
All right, we'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Hornsby, if you don't mind.
Thank you, President Ayala, and to the rest of the board. I also have the privilege of introducing one, a student today, Casey Martinez. Casey presented at the annual biomedical research conference for minority students at the National Conference in Anaheim, California in November. She was given a travel award covering all expenses associated with the conference. Casey's undergraduate research experience includes participation in the Saint, in the Lewis Stokes Alliance for Minority Participation Program with the University of Texas El Paso. Casey is also affiliated with a research lab at the University of Texas Arlington. Her work in this lab culminated in a summer internship at the Max Planck Institute in Berlin, Germany. Her research experience at Tarrant County College includes Biology 2389 and Academic Cooperative at South Campus with Dr. Paul Luster, Chemistry 2289 Academic Cooperative on the Northeast Campus with Dr. Kenneth Drake. Casey plans to pursue a MD/PhD program. I present to you Casey Martinez.
Thank you all. I just want to say thank you to the board, and thank you especially to my teachers, one of which, like, highly, Dr. Magnus, that introduced me to the All Sam program, and that kind of opened up a lot of opportunities for me. And I honestly sincerely believe that I wouldn't have any of these opportunities if I hadn't come here to TCC. So thank you to all who are here. Thank you to Dr. Magnus, to Professor Loyster, to Dr. Drake, and again, thank you all.
Thank you, Casey. Did you say that there was somebody here with you you wanted to recognize?
I remember.
Oh, well, thank you very much for your guidance and working so closely with our students. We appreciate that. And congratulations to you, Casey.
Yes.
And keep in touch, we'd like to hear about your pathway. Okay. Let's see, Mr. Greenhill, if you don't mind.
Dean, there he is. Come on up. He's lucky to have me. Where is he? Oh, there he is. He's on my right. Okay. Dean, I think he's also from California, is that correct? And he came to Fort Worth and went to Boswell High School, and he's now with us, and my script is going to need some explanations about what he's really doing at the Alliance place in that program, because he's the enforcer, whatever that means. Dean is a seasoned student worker who noticed a gap in the safety practices among less experienced peers. We're going to have to explain that. Dean boldly recommended to his supervisor the creation of and his assignment to the position of Safety Representative. Dean is highly respected by the 200-plus faculty and the students whom he supports. His ability to enforce policy and procedures in a non-confrontational manner made selecting him for this position an easy choice. In his assignment, Dean is responsible for monitoring safety within, now this is a long one, the aviation maintenance technology, welding technology, and non-destructive test evaluation lab. Got it? His duties include identifying mitigating hazards and enforcing preemptive measures such as the use of personnel protective equipment. Responsibilities such as these are typically reserved for full-time employees. While serving in his role as non-destructive inspection lab assistant, Dean performed an unprecedented repair to a film processor roller. Now, listen to this, his efforts saved the college over $11,000 in equipment replacement costs. What about that? Okay, Dean, you get to explain what all this means. Thank you.
Howdy, howdy, y'all. As stated before, I'm Dean Jackson, and I work over at the Northwest Alliance Campus for the AMP and more newly created the NDT program, which is where I specialize, which is our non-destructive testing area, which is a fantastic program, and I've had a lot of support from my instructor, Ms. Queen up there. She is a fantastic teacher, and I'm enjoying my time up there. But I also enjoy very much working up at the Alliance Campus with all of my fellow staff members, such as Doug or Jacob, who have helped me grow to the person that you see up here today and be able to help with the safety management. I'm the lab safety instructor up there or assistant for all of the programs that we have on the lab floors out in our hangars. So any of the classrooms that you see, I've taken steps to making and mitigating safety procedures for there, along with making sure everything's up to fire code and other things of that nature.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dean, congratulations. Is our waiting hour here?
Okay. Did you have someone else? No? All right. Dean, thank you so much for all of your diligence, and goodness, you're in risk management, it sounds like, right? So thank you so much. I believe, Mr. Greenhill, you also had something you wanted to mention about trustee activity about the South Campus Holiday Celebration?
I do? Okay. Yes, of course. Oh, the South, oh, it was a lovely party. Yeah, there we are. We all met down there, we all met down there at the South Campus for a lovely, lovely party, and I really enjoyed it with the, the chicken was great, the, I always love meeting with the faculty and staff and the president, and there's Dr. LeBlanc and all the rest of us. I look like I've been through a fight or something. But anyway, it was a wonderful, wonderful party, and we really enjoyed it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that, and thank you for attending. Mr. Hornsby, do you have anything else you wanted to mention about any activities that you had?
Yes, ma'am. I did have the opportunity of going to, on the Southeast Campus, attending their senior bash.
Their senior bash?
From their senior program. They had a end-of-the-year program, and it was just a fun day of activities and games. They had box lunches and had a good time there. I was also supposed to go to the First Choice, a closeout program that they have every semester. First Choice are those students that have aged out of public schools that still need some special assistance. And those, those young people, those younger adults, they sang and they danced. And on this particular year, one young man who was nonverbal, his father had not heard his voice, said welcome.
Oh, that's fantastic.
And his father didn't know that he was going to do that, and so it was a surprise for his father, for him to get up and just say, "Welcome."
Yes.
And so the program for those, especially for parents that have children that have special needs, that need additional assistance, to be able to be successful and to do as much as they can in society for themselves, this program is really wonderful. It gives them another place to learn and to go, and I sure hope it develops to a place where we have one on every campus, because we have those students in every region of Tarrant County.
Right.
And they need a place, those parents, to have their children to go and feel that they are still moving forward in their life and being successful.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for attending. That's a very moving celebration that they have with First Choice. I know that's, I've attended that, and that's, we are so blessed to have some very good staff and faculty that work with all of those students and with those parents, so thank you. Let's see, Mr. Kine.
Good afternoon, everyone. I think I have one slide. For the second year, Awaken Ensemble out of Arlington will be sponsoring a holiday concert that will be benefiting Tarrant County College food pantries. So Awaken Ensemble is a nondenominational group of educators and music educators, teachers who love to sing and teach through singing, that gets together four times a year, and this particular concert will be highlighting the holidays. It will be on December 18th at 3:00 PM at First United Methodist Church of Arlington, and they are encouraging all attendees to bring non-perishable items, food, other needed items that will replenish the Tarrant County College food pantries. Last year, I was able to attend their inaugural event, and it is this really special opportunity to see how communities come together to support the various TCC campuses. So if you have a chance to go, I will be planning on attending again.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. That's excellent work that we're doing out there to help our students. Mr. Barr, do you have any other activities that you'd like to report on? Okay. Dr. Morrison, how about yourself? Have any activities you'd like to report on?
Thank you, Madam President. Good afternoon, fellow board members, faculty, and staff. I'm so happy to be here with you today to celebrate, and I want to just share a few of the activities. First of all, let me just say that I truly enjoy all of the student activity postings on Instagram and Twitter. Gosh, I wish I could be there with you for every one of them, and I appreciate the great variety and the encouragement that you offer to the students and faculty and staff on a daily basis on campus. For me, that's a big part of what attending a learning institution is all about. So I want to share a few activities with you. On Monday, November 21st, I was privileged to emcee a program for the African-American Leadership Institute. It was the eighth annual Thanksgiving brunch. It was held at, on the campus of Paul Quinn College in Dallas, where we honored 50 years of elected service for Congresswoman Eddie Bernice Johnson. She first served in the state legislature, then the Texas Senate, and she's completing 30 years of service in Congress. She'll retire January 3rd. So this year, those are some of the elected officials who were present. You might recognize some of the people from the news. Second from the left is the LSDA. There are probably 100 elected officials, black elected officials from across North Texas, who came to a fellowship and celebrate Ms. Johnson. And we, not only the mayor, Mayor Johnson is there, we had five state representatives there, lots of judges, and we not only celebrated Ms. Johnson, but we also welcomed the Congresswoman-elect Jasmine Crockett. Not sure we have a picture of her, but it was a great event. Of course, Tarrant County was in charge of planning. That's the Crowley ISD Board President on the far left, and she was in charge of creating the awards. We presented Ms. Johnson with a large crystal vase that had the seal of the three houses that she had served in. And we also was able to invite two of our faculty members from South Campus, who are part of the Visions Unlimited Program, which is the award-winning Tarrant County College program that welcomes persons who have been housing-challenged or homeless to the college and helps them to matriculate through their coursework. That's Dr. Tina Jenkins, and Dr. William Brown joined her. They led a drum circle, which just is a way to get everybody thinking the same and on the same rhythm. We might have to bring that to board meeting next time. So it was a great morning, and our former trustee, Mayor Dr. Michael Evans, gave the morning inspiration or occasion with a very detailed account of standing on the shoulders, where he recounted some of Mrs. Johnson's outstanding accomplishments since she's been in Congress. One of the most important to me, since I grew up in East Texas, was her work to stop the flooding of the Trinity River. There is Congresswoman with our current board member, Mr. Reverend Hornsby, and with Dr. Evans. But it was due to her work in stopping the flooding of the Trinity River. Every year, when I was growing up in East Texas, now, we knew that a certain time of the year, there were certain roads that would be impassable because the Trinity River would flood. So in her work, she was, that's one of the many things she was able to accomplish. It was a great event, and we were happy to just come together and relax, encourage each other, and give guidance. Appreciated the support for Tarrant County College graphics. They do great work. As I said, it was hosted by Paul Quinn College, who has been the host since its inception, and it was a wonderful opportunity. Thank you. Next, we have a celebration of Southeast Connector. You probably heard about it on the news, which will be a $1.8 billion project, Texas Department of Transportation, that will connect 820, I-20, and I-30, and 287, will be on the east side of Fort Worth. And that was Turning of the Dirt. That's on our campus at Fitch U and 820. And the State Representative District 95, Nicole Cogu, the Chairman of TechDOT, was there. That's Representative Cogu on the left. That's a public information person from TechDOT. The Chief Engineer from TechDOT, who just came to Fort Worth, David Salazar, was there. The Mike Morris, the Transportation Director at North Texas COG was there. It was well-attended by officials from all of Southeast Tarrant County, Kennedale, Mansfield, Everman, Fort Worth. I reminded them that we're hoping to get some training programs for people in the community so that they can be on those jobs and help to earn some of that $1.8 billion and become taxpayers. Also, it was with a broken heart that Fort Worth said goodbye to one of our favorite citizens and good friends this week, Mr. Jim Lane. He was loved by many, did many great things in the community, including the idea for the creation of the herd, which travels on the north side twice daily. There were many ideas that he served. He was former city councilperson, and currently he was serving as Secretary of the Tarrant Regional Water District Board. So he's been a great friend to many. He was former City Councilperson, and currently, he was serving as Secretary of the Tarrant Regional Water District Board. So he's been a great friend to many. Our own board member, Kenneth Barr, did a stellar job of sharing his heartfelt memories from their longtime friendship and working relationship. Thank you, Mr. Barr. And I know this has been a tough year for you, but I appreciate the fact that you continue your service with such dignity and grace. Finally, when one is gifted a lifetime achievement award, there's certainly the realization that it is less about you as an individual and more about those who have shared your journey. And I have often said that education is both my vocation and my advocation. And certainly for me, it has been true that in my life, education has been a pathway to a world of opportunity. That's my father's 17th child. My father had a fourth-grade education. And my commitment has been, he was born in 1886, by the way, my commitment has always been to education, and I've benefited greatly from that. And even though I had many health challenges as a child, it's been my privilege to live a productive life. And so my commitment is to stay in the fight and serve, especially those who can benefit the most. I want to highlight this young man who called me a couple of days after I got the surprise announcement that I was receiving the award. I still don't know who nominated me. This is Ashton Miles. He graduated from TCC in 2014, and he went on to graduate from Howard University in 2018. And he's currently a full-time professional with Walgreens Corporate Office. And when he called just to check in, I told him about the award, and he was so kind to buy his own ticket and drive over to National Harbor, Maryland, to share the evening with me. Just one of the many examples of how TCC has changed the lives of so many. He's a veteran. His next goal is to use his veteran benefits to buy a home. The lady on the left is a newly-elected Board Trustee from Lancaster ISD, who was attending the conference. And many of you don't know, I have a daughter, and that's my daughter, Betsy, on the right, who flew up to share the evening with me. I am so grateful. And I want to say that I'm so grateful that these 46 years that I have served with you here at Tarrant County College and served the citizens of Tarrant County has been my privilege. And so each and every one of you deserve a part and credit for this NAPSE Lifetime Achievement Award, which was given to me at their 50th convention. I'm so grateful for the privilege of serving, and it's my commitment to continue the vision of our great institution, accessible and affordable education for all, quality education right here in Tarrant County. Thank you very much. And one final recognition, a couple of months ago, we were privileged to have one of our TCC South Crowley ISD early college high school graduates to come before us to share. At that time, he was a district manager for, for a city councilman. He has resigned from that job, because he's about to enter another great career opportunity. But on Saturday, he will graduate with his bachelor's degree from UNT. And he's my primary contact now with the office of Congresswoman-elect Jasmine Crockett. Thank you.
That is fantastic. And Dr. Morrison, congratulations on the recognition, well-deserved. And thank you for your 46 years of service to this community, but also, I know you were very involved in the community before that. So I think it's been a lifetime of dedication to the community. So thank you for that, and we recognize you.
Thank you so much.
Let's see, it's been a very busy month, and it's been a very busy year. I'm going to just highlight a few activities that occurred. In particular, the TCC was present at the Service Academy Selection Committee this year. I know that Dr. Sean Madison has served in the past, but had an opportunity to serve with the group of other citizens that are associated or that live in Congressman VC's district. And we are able to interview those candidates that are pursuing appointments to the service academies. And what was especially, special for me this year is that one of the students that was there is a student that is attending Tarrant County College. So it was very, very nice to see somebody there representing TCC. All of the students were just amazing, and all of them are well-deserving of appointments. But most importantly, they are choosing to serve our country, so we admire them for that and thank them for that. And we want to thank Congressman VC for engaging in TCC in the selection committee. Also, just want to thank the Longhorn Council of the Boy Scouts for choosing to partner with Tarrant County College. We have, I guess for several years now, we have actually hosted the University of Scouting. And here's a picture of the, some more than 300, almost 300 adults, and that were attending the University of Scouting. And what they do is they will come to this for training, and they will take the information that they learn here, and they will impart that with the students, the scouts. The one on the left is Scott Fuller. He is the Director of Programming for Longhorn Council. And so we want to thank them for that partnership. But again, almost 300 adults attend that training, and we have partnered with, with the Longhorn Council and other councils for many, many years. And we want to thank them for that, because those are students that will eventually be students here at our college as well. But thank you to all of those adults also for participating in this training, because again, whatever they're learning, they're imparting with young, young people, and we appreciate that. So, and let's see, what else do we have to port on? Lastly, I'd like to just kind of highlight some of the year-end highlights of things that we have achieved, I guess, together. You know, the end of the year is always a time to be reflective, but I like to also take the opportunity to really, I think this serves as a catalyst for the work that we are looking forward to doing and continuing to do, to help our students and to help our community, because we are in the business of changing lives. And it takes everyone to make, to ensure that we are helping people, and we're helping people achieve their goals. We had some wonderful students here. We had Jocelyn, we had Casey, and we had Dean to talk about the impact that TCC has had on their lives. And so I just want to highlight a few things that I thought were very, very important, and thank you to Mr. Gates and your staff for pulling all of this information for us. But in 2022, TCC's Fire and Rescue Program had 13,930 enrollments. That's almost 14,000 enrollments, representing a 15% increase from the previous year. That's remarkable. So thank you to you and your staff, Dr. Blankenbaker. TCC's fall-to-fall retention rate for degree-seeking first-time-in-college students increased 10% points to 61%, the highest rate in a decade. Congratulations to all of those students that are first-time-in-college students, and to their families as well for the sacrifices, and the mentors that are involved in that, and all of our students, and our faculty members and advisors that are involved in that, that pathway for them. In the fall of 2022, TCC dispersed $38.6 million in financial aid to students as of November 21st of 2022. For the 2021-2022 award year, TCC dispersed $92 million in higher education emergency relief, which are HRF student grants. In 2021-2022, TCC conferred about 7,500 degrees and certificates. Of these, 3,000 were workforce awards, sending highly skilled workers into the local technical workforce. The remaining 4,330 degrees were students who planned to continue their studies towards a bachelor's degree. And of these graduates, 522 were early college high school and dual-credit graduates that were receiving their high school diploma and their associate degrees at the same time. These are phenomenal numbers, so it's reflective of the work that everyone has putting in here at TCC. And thank you to you, Dr. LeBlanc, for your leadership as well. In 2022, TCC executed 37 articulation agreements with higher education partners, bringing the total count of active articulation agreements to 172. So what that means is those are 172 higher education universities that our students can transfer to, and their, all of their credits will transfer as well. Is that correct? That's fantastic. There are 1,281 veterans and eligible family members using the Department of Veterans Affairs benefits in the fall of 2022. And we had Jocelyn just talk about the impact of that Veterans Affairs Department. So thank you for, for that, and for the folks that are working in that department as well, and for those that are supporting our veterans. And the Student Emergency Assistance Fund has provided over a half a million dollars, $527,000 in grants to students since it started in 2019. So we want to thank all of those folks that are involved in our foundation for the work that they're doing as well, because that's a half a million dollars that students are being granted to help so that they can continue their studies. And if I recall, Dr. LeBlanc, the percentage of those students that once they're assisted, it's, it's close to 80, 90% that they continue their studies. So that is very, very impactful. And also, that we want to recognize, TCC was ranked number five of the nation's top community colleges in the nation for total enrollments of Hispanic students. So we want to congratulate and thank each and every one of you for your efforts, for your work, for your dedication. It's been a very, very busy year. It's coming back from COVID, and it just, it's a reflection of your dedication, commitment, your compassion, your passion, and, and all that it takes in order for us to help our community and to help our students. So we want to congratulate each and every one of you, and we want to give each and every one of you a round of applause for your efforts. And thank you to all our partners as well.
I'm sorry, you know, we have fact-checkers.
Yes.
Watching us.
Absolutely.
I need to make a correction.
Certainly.
The Southeast Connector budget is 1.6 million, and it connects 820, I-20, 287 on the southeast side of Fort Worth.
That's fantastic. And that's going to be very good for our students and those folks that are coming to that facility.
It will help with the traffic.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you for that, Dr. Morrison.
Also, the Visions Unlimited Program is on South Campus.
Yes.
It's one of those specialty programs, and it's on South Campus. We appreciate Dr. Lupkin and his staff for continuing to support that. And of course, it gets support throughout the county, and especially interest from the state legislature, but it's housed on the South Campus.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for that. And Dr. Jenkins does a remarkable job with that program. Okay.
Madam President.
Yes.
Would be remiss if I did not clarify, I have slept since the weekend before Thanksgiving. But Congresswoman Beth Van Dyne also asked for representation on her Service Academy Selection Board, and I participated. Likewise, there was representation from the early college high school at the northeast campus. So very impressive group of candidates.
Isn't it? I'm telling you, they are, and they will be serving our country well. Thank you. Thank you for serving in that capacity. Okay, no other activities to report from the trustees? Okay, we'll go ahead and go on into our meeting agenda here. We'll start with item number four, consideration and approval of the consent agenda. You've had an opportunity to look at this information. Do we have any specific questions or clarifications that we need to address?
Madam President.
Yes.
I would move approval of the consent agenda.
Okay.
Items 4A and 4B.
All right, items 4A and 4B from Dr. Morrison. Second from Mr. Barr, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. All right. Item five, we'll start out with consideration and approval of individual action items, starting out with the 5A, adopt the single-member district map designated as Plan Two, and direct that all future elections be conducted pursuant to Plan Two. Ms. Bracken, if you want to go ahead and read a little bit about this, then I'll ask the, see if we have any public comment to share.
Good afternoon. I'm Carol Bracken. I'm the General Counsel of the District. I'm back again to consider, to continue our year-long journey in the redistricting of the seven districts of the Tarrant County College District. I have Lisa McBride from the firm of Thompson and Horton on the phone, ready to join us remotely, and Mr. Jesse, where are you? Oh, there you are. And Jesse Gaines is here as well. As you, as you all know, Mr. Gaines and Ms. Horton have been part of the team that has prepared the demographics and created the plan, which we now call Plan Two, that we are asking for you to consider for final approval. And Lisa, if you're on the line, if you would like to make your presentation?
She, ah, of course, she's not going to be on the phone.
Oh, okay.
She, as, as, thank you. As, as all of you know, Lisa, she has a very busy schedule, and she's been out for a while. So she just texted me on the phone saying that she had got called into a closed-door meeting. So therefore, one thing you learn in this business is you stay ready. So that's what I'm doing. So we are at the end of a long journey that we started back, I believe it was, COVID was rampant. It was back early in the year. We started having meetings. We had Ms. LeBlanc got all of us together. We came to the board. We talked about various proposals, timelines, how to get this process finished. And we are now at the end of a journey. And the proposal is on the wall. This journey started out, and we're here today, December 8th, the legal overview. And it's going to touch a little on this, because we've talked about this at every one of our meetings, so I don't want to bore people on where we are.
Mr. Gaines, would you mind introducing yourself for those folks that are listening, so that they'll, we know who you are, but not everyone in the.
My name is Jesse Gaines. I'm a lawyer in this community, have been for many years, have worked on redistricting with the district for several years, many years. I have, in fact, the district have told me that I have been the only one to show up at all of their public meetings since they've begun the single-member district process. And in 2010, under the leadership of the Pride Chancellor, they decided that since I volunteered so much, helping the board, that they would ask me to help participate in the paid process. And that is based on Chancellor Johnson from the here today, and Ms. Carol here have made sure that I have been able to be in this process. So the legal overview, redistricting is a process where, we can go to the next slide. Redistricting is a process by which the boundaries of elected districts, single-member districts are periodically re-divided in responses to changes in population. And as all of you know, our great county has, for some reason, I don't know why, we're having all these folks move from all these other counties and cities and states that are moving from Tarrant County, moving to Tarrant County. So we added 301,000 people plus from 2010 to 2020. So the total district population now is 2,115,64 persons. So therefore, our seven-member, our seven districts were out of population whack. They exceeded the 10% population variance. So that is why we had to redistrict at this time. That's why we had to do it. So our meetings on, our meetings on redistricting, we had four board, board meetings, one public hearing, one final adoption meeting, and we had a dedicated redistricting work website where we submitted, where we solicited comments from the public. We started out with our criteria. We wanted to be, have near equal population. That was one of the, the board criterias. We wanted to be compact and contiguous. We wanted to avoid retrogression of minority voting, voting rights. And we wanted easily identifiable places where we could stay the district ended. And we wanted. And we wanted to preserve incumbent constituency relations. In other words, we didn't want wholesale changes where you would not know who the persons are. We wanted to maintain communities of interests and keep neighborhoods together. And we wanted to preserve existing boundaries when possible and avoid splitting county election precedents to the extent possible. And we have been successful in that. So final map two. If you would take a look at the all single member districts together, these districts look fairly similar to what we've had before. There has been some modifications and some changes, but they have been changes that basically preserve what we have now. This is also kept all the population centers together. It kept the districts basically with the same minority ratios in each district. The changes, there has been, there was a little change to the north, but those changes were acceptable to all the persons that we experienced and dealt with. The comments did not reflect any, any, any negative changes, positives, comments. The Plan Two analysis. If you look, I'm not going to go through all of this. I'm just going to tell you that if you look at the Plan Two analysis, trustee district one, total population, again, our variance now is 3.7. We start out with a 13-point variance. So we have a 3.7 variance among all of our districts. So therefore, all of our districts are within the, within a 10% numbers. So therefore, we won't have any problems if someone say to us that your population is out of whack and we're going to file a lawsuit against you because you didn't redistrict properly. Everything has been done according to the law. Even though we don't have to submit our proposals to the Justice Department anymore, that was declared unconstitutional in 2013 in a lawsuit. However, we do our redistricting with that in mind that if ever anybody want us to submit our proposals to anybody for approval, like the Justice Department, they will be approved. Again, the voting age populations are all very about the same. The total population is about the same, the variance of districts. We look at district two and if you just go down the lines and see the numbers of population centers, the different ethnic groups that are in each district, they're all very similar to what we had before. And unless anybody got any particular question on any of those items, I will defer and move on. Thank you. The recommended action tonight, which you're going to be called upon to do, asking the board to adopt redistricting map to the order and resolution governing the same and authorize the administration to provide notice of TCC's new single member district boundaries to all impacted counties. I believe, I'll correct me if I'm wrong, we only serve one county. We don't, we're not serving Wise County and Parker County and Johnson County. Is that correct? Somebody correct me if I'm wrong. Okay, okay. So we, we're a one-county institution. I mean, if you know, there are some JCs that, well, we, we, I apologize if you use the word JC. There are some community colleges, there are some colleges that, that use the, that use, that go into other areas. So that is what you're going to be called upon tonight to do, to approve this. And once it's approved, we will, it will be submitted to the election administrators and we will also submit the shape files to the administration so that we'll have all of that in place. And I believe we, that is the end of this journey. It's almost, it's been sort of a, a regimental over there who has been with us on this journey from the beginning and we're all here and with the final. And Lisa stayed as long as she could, but she was not able to be on the call tonight. And, and, and again, I ask that you approve this item. Carol.
Thank you, Jesse, very much. In a moment, you'll be asked to consider action. There are actually a couple of parts to what you're being asked to do. Part one is to repeal the current single member district map for the district. Next is to adopt Plan Two. Next is to address the trustee elections for the district in the coming years. Current trustees will serve out the remainder of their current terms and the new map will be phased in as the staggered terms of the trustees currently expire in office. The election for single member districts four and five will be held in May 2023, 2029, 2035, and in six-year intervals thereafter. The elections for single member districts six and seven shall be held in May of '25, '31, '37, and in six-year increments thereafter. And the election for single member districts one, two, and three will be held in May of '27, '33, and '39, and then in single, in six-year intervals thereafter. That concludes the presentation. If there are any questions from the board, I'd be glad to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions or clarifications?
Thank you.
Before we move on, Carol, I'm just going to read something here to see if there's any public comment. Thank you, Mr. Gaines, for your presentation. We appreciate all the work and effort that you all helped us with and guiding us through this process. And thank you as well, Ms. Bracken. Before the board considers any action item on, action on this particular item, are there any persons present who would like to address the board on the redistricting proposal? If you are, please step forward at this time. As with public comment, each speaker may address the board for three minutes. We have had other public meetings, but we just want to do, give the opportunity once more. Okay? All right. If there, there's no public comment, do we have any one that would like to make a motion?
Madam President.
Yes.
I move that the current single member district map of the Tarrant County College District be repealed and no longer in effect for future elections, that the board adopt the single member district map designated as Plan Two, which satisfies the redistricting criteria adopted by this board, and that future trustee elections of the Tarrant County College District be conducted pursuant to Plan Two. Current trustees will serve out the remainder of their current terms and the new map be phased in as the staggered terms of the trustees currently in office expire as follows. The election for single member districts four and five shall be held in May 2023, 2029, 2035, and in six-year intervals thereafter. The election for single member districts six and seven shall be held in May 2025, 2031, 2037, and in six-year intervals thereafter. And the election for single member districts one, two, and three shall be held in May 2027, 2033, 2039, and in six-year intervals thereafter.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion.
I second it.
Hornsby and second by Mr. Greenhill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you. We appreciate that and thank you, Ms. Bracken, for guiding us through this process. Yes.
Again, I, I would like to thank the board for giving me this opportunity and I look forward to working with this board in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines, we appreciate that. And please send our gratitude to Ms. McBride as well.
Madam President.
Yes.
Might I say that we're so lucky here in Tarrant County. Mr. Gaines is one of the foremost experts in the state of Texas on the redistricting process, the statistics. And we have seen his work have be reflected in a positive way across the state. And we're so happy that you dedicated some of your time, unpaid and paid, to helping Tarrant County College maintain its stellar record of representation of all of our citizens. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Morrison and thank you, Mr. Gaines. And what I really enjoyed is that we had some students, the demographers that were former TCC students that were also part of this process. So that says a lot about the college. Thank you. All right, we will move on to item 5B, which is the acceptance of the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal years ended August 31st, 2022 and 2021. Ms. Allenese, if you don't mind introducing yourselves.
Of course, Susan Allenese, Chief Operating Officer. And it's that time of year for you all to accept the annual audited financial statements. We have Dallas Duggar here today. He led the audit this year and he'll be doing a briefing for you. You've received a, a fresh book off the press today that replaces pages 126 and 127, as I indicated in my email yesterday to outline a, a couple of findings that he will walk you through. I do want to take a moment to thank our staff. Ronnie Watkins leads the Finance and Administration Department and, and Lindsay Blaine is the, the lead within the department managing the, the preparation of the financial statements and working with auditors. And I know there's others involved, but they, they've certainly put in their time. But I will turn it over to Dallas to introduce himself and his team and he'll walk you through the audit.
Thank you.
Thank you, good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Again, my name is Dallas Duggar. I'm a partner with Weaver, joined here by a couple of my other team members here to go through the results of the fiscal year '22 audit. If anyone has any questions as I go through the presentation, happy to take those as they come. So we had several team members from Weaver on the audit team for this year, myself. I lead our higher education practice within the firm. I spend most, most of my time working with higher ed's or other types of governments. We had two managers on the team this year, Bryant Sanchez, who will be covering part of the presentation, Austin Henderson. We also have an IT team who we have the senior manager for, who does IT-specific work. We have a data analytics team that does some analysis and several others that, that support us as we go through our testing. The cycle for the audit, it's really a year-round cycle. You know, new pronouncements come up, changes come up, transactions happen. So it's more of a two-way communication cycle throughout the year. But the audit officially kicked off this year in July where we come out to do interim procedures. We gain understanding of key accounting processes and controls that impact your financial statements, cash receipts, disbursements, payroll, treasury, financial close. And then we also do a good portion of the single audit test work during this time too. So because the districts receives federal and state funding, you'll have to receive single audits over selected federal and state awards. And we do a lot of that work over the summer. And then for final footwork, that takes place in the October, November timeframe. We, of course, test material balances and transactions occurring during the year. And we also assist management with the preparation of the annual comprehensive financial report. All of that's in anticipation of being able to release the report today. We conduct our audit, audits in accordance with several different standards. So generally accepted auditing standards is the overarching guide for all of our audits. But because we're performing audits over federal and state awards, we perform those in accordance with generally accepted government auditing standards. And that's part of the single audit that we do. So we do a federal single audit in accordance with the uniform administrative requirements put out by the federal government, as well as the Texas Uniform Grant Management Standards. We also do compliance testing over applicable laws, regulations, including the Public Funds Investment Act. Our audit approach was risk-based, as it is on all of our audits, where we go through your financial statements and identify areas of heightened risk, including after we gain that understanding of controls and processes, we take a risk-based approach. So for this year, that included federal and state grant revenues and expenses. This was another year where much of the HERF federal funding, part of the CARES Act, was awarded and spent during the year. So just because of the complexities with that award that, of course, was selected and considered high risk for our testing. We look at disbursements of our payroll and other non-payroll expenditures, management's override of internal controls, as well as revenue recognition for the, for the different revenue streams that the district has. Ultimately, what we're trying to do is provide reasonable assurance whether or not the financial statements are free of material misstatement, free of non-compliance, and free of, of material internal control deficiencies over compliance. The act for is quite a long report, several areas of it. This is an overview of how it's split up. So there's an introductory section, section with a transmitter letter that you all provide and prepare. And then beyond that is the financial section. So you'll see our opinion related to the financial statements there. Next, you have the management's discussion and analysis. This is not audited by us, but we do agree the information within to the statements that we do audit. That's a good section to look at if you're looking for, trying to gain an understanding over year-over-year changes within the various balances and revenues and expenses. There's the financial statements themselves and the related footnotes. And then as part of the act for requirements, there, there is some required supplementary information that has to be included. That's more of a breakdown of some of the higher level reported numbers within the statements themselves. There's a statistical section, which, when available, has 10-year lookback, various types of information. Again, we don't audit that, but for anything that's financial there, we do ensure that it agrees to the statements. And then the very back part of the report is the federal single audit and the related results, as well as the state single audit. So we are, we have completed the audit and we are in a position to issue a final report. Our opinion will be, our opinion over the financial statements will be unmodified. It used to be unqualified or a clean audit opinion. That's the highest form of assurance we're able to provide. We do have to communicate whether or not there are any weaknesses in internal control that are identified during our audit. The most severe weakness being a material weakness. We do not have any of those to report. Less severe than that is a significant deficiency. And this is really to the level that, based on what we saw, we did identify something that we think is worthy, calling out, bringing to the attention of the users of the financial statements. That related to an IT-specific finding, and we'll go through that here in just a minute. And then we did not note any material non-compliance to the financial statements themselves. So for the IT-related finding, as mentioned, we do come out and test the IT controls and environments with the, the cap of just trying to understand how it impacts your financial statements. We did have one finding that we identified in the report. Now let our IT senior manager talk a bit about that.
So as part of, part of the audit, we do.
I don't mean to interrupt. Would you mind introducing yourselves?
Absolutely.
Because we are, we're streaming this. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Miho Lullaby. I'm a senior manager with Weaver and work with the audit team.
Thank you.
So as part of the audit, we do evaluate internal controls and IT controls over systems that impact financial reporting. And one of the areas that we cover are the, is the process over user access administration. And we did identify three, three deficiencies around this process. So this covers how users are added to the system, whether they're added appropriately, whether they're terminated once they're, those accounts are no longer needed. And then if there's a periodic access review to revalidate those accounts on a, on an ongoing basis. So for one of the, one of the deficiencies identified, there were 15 of 40 sampled users that were still, that still had access to the system. And then a separate test for 14 of 40 samples, the user accounts were provisioned without sufficient documentation for approval. And then there was also not a periodic access review performed to revalidate those accounts. So in aggregate, we identified that as a, as a significant deficiency. Any, any questions on that in particular?
Any questions, clarifications?
And, and just one other point to add to that. We didn't identify any inappropriate use of the, of the accounts. So there wasn't any, any authorized activity that happened as, as a result.
One thing I will mention too, related to that item, that is included within the federal single audit portion of the report. The finding itself is detailed out there, but also our recommendation. We had met with management and IT group to go through, you know, what our finding was and what our recommendation would be. And management has developed a corrective action plan. So that's also noted within the report.
I'd like to also mention that we have a internal way of doing something very similar with our audit finance committee and the internal auditor that we have required by law. Yearly, the audit, they will, what they will do is, is risk-based as well. They will develop. will develop several matters that should, that the audit, internal auditor should review. And the internal auditor reviews it. And sometimes, everything is really clean. Sometimes there is a hiccup here or two, and so they make a, you know, make a suggestion for a, to remediate. And there will be a response and an agreement to remediate. So this is, it's a good thing to have these kinds of audits, to make sure. This is a very large institution, but your audit committee meets about every quarter with your internal auditor, and he's, he's got a whole list of things, but it's risk-based. And it's a good thing because it, it helps keep us under internal control. I just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, yeah. Now, I'll say to you, related to this finding specifically, there are other mitigating controls in place which would help to prevent something wrong going on. But this is more of a, just improvement on the front end to some of these controls. Yeah, yeah. Turn it over to Bryant.
Good afternoon. I'm Bryant Sanchez. I'm a manager with the audit team. So very quickly going over our audit results over federal and state awards. We issued an unmodified opinion on those federal and state awards. We did not note any material weaknesses, although we did note a significant deficiency over internal controls and a compliance finding, which I'll go into more detail here. So we had a find, again, a compliance finding and an internal control, over the compliance and internal control over compliance, related to the student financial aid assistance program, specifically regarding the verification process. As noted here, the Department of Education's require, or the, the district is required to verify information required from the Department of Education. For one of the 40 students selected, the district was unable to locate a required form. And then, in addition, these, in addition to these communications, changes in significant accounting policies. This year, the district implemented GASB 87, and we noted no material misstatements recorded as a result of our audit procedures. Additional matters noted, again, no material irregularities or illegal acts noted, no transactions entered into by the district during the year for which there was a lack of authoritative guidance or consensus. We experienced no difficulties or disagreements during the course of the audit. We noted no independence issues, and we were not aware of any consultations or requests for a second opinion from other accountants. Very quick, high-level overview of the financials. As you'll note here, an increase in assets, primarily due to an increase in investments, as well as an increase in capital assets, as well as an increase in liabilities, primarily due to the issuances of bonds. In comparing 20, fiscal year '21 and '22, a decrease was noted in operating revenue, primarily due to a decrease in tuition. We noted increase in operating expense, primarily due to an increase in scholarships and fellowships awarded. And for non-operating revenue, we noted an increase in federal grants, again, related to the HERF program, and also an increase in tax collections.
So, yeah, if anyone has any questions on the process, results, or the ACRA itself, happy to go through those.
Any questions, clarifications? Thank you all very much for coming. We appreciate it, and appreciate staff working so closely with them, Susan.
Great. Now, I agree. We really appreciate, you know, the finance team. They're very prepared. We're able to hit the ground running, very responsive. So it helps to make that process about as efficient as it can be. So thank you all.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
So I'll note your action today is just to accept the financial statements. What I would also suggest is that staff will follow up with the Audit and Finance Committee to monitor the corrective action plan around the IT access. One of the things I will note is, you know, as, as we move into the next century with our new ERP and eradicate so many of the manual and email-based transactions that happen, that, that's certainly a big step in the right direction for risk mitigation around that. But there are some things that we can do internally in between. So we'll, we will work with the audit committee to report out. In addition, I'll note that the auditor, next year, when they come back, will review these findings and our progress. There will be another major milestone for us to take a look at those, which is a good thing. So. But your action today is to accept, and then that will allow us to submit this report to the various state agencies and recipients that, that require us to do so.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ollone. Any questions or clarifications for Ms. Ollone? Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion for the acceptance of the annual comprehensive financial report.
I'll make a motion to, oops, go ahead. Well, I'd like to make a motion to accept the annual audit report.
Thank you so much. Mr. Greenhill?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Okay, items 5C, Board of Trustees endorsement of the Tarrant County College District, College District Sustainability Master Plan.
Yes. So this has been a long journey led by this board on working to establish a framework for our sustainability goals as a, as a college. We've completed Phase One, as you know, that's focused on the built environment. And our request of you today is to endorse that plan that was submitted to you last month for review. It establishes some goals, as well as a framework by which we will report and compare ourselves to other agencies. In addition, it will allow us to move forward internally with staff on, on Phases Two and Three, which include our operations and a review of those, and where we can make some headway there, as well as eventually our curriculum as well, and including students and, and course design related to sustainability issues. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for all this. I know this has been a long-term approach, and we appreciate it, and appreciate your taking the feedback from the board on this. This is very important for us as a college, as a community, as well.
Of course. And I'm sorry, can I thank Okong Hemmings and his staff, Walt Williams, Michael Williams, that, for all of the work that they have done in guiding this project forward, as well as incorporating the results of it into the way that they do business, which is important.
Thank you so much. And thank you all. Appreciate it. Walter and Okong. Any questions, clarifications from the board? Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion. So move from Dr. Morrison?
Second.
Second by Mr. Greenhill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. All right, 5D, Amendment to Agreement with Skanska USA Buildings, Inc. Let me make sure I'm reading the right one. For Change Order 001 on the Northwest Redevelopment Project in the amount of $1,076,475 to replenish owner-controlled contingency. Ms. Ollone.
Yes. As, as you are aware, with this enormous project, we are, have brought to you a series of guaranteed maximum price contracts as we've fine-tuned and bid out construction of certain areas. We've also authorized, the board has authorized a couple of work authorizations for various aspects that we accelerated between some of those contract elements, including some of the parking lot work, the site preparation, grading, and so on. As part of each of those, we establish an owner-controlled contingency that's allowed within the contract to pay to those vendors as, as we run across site conditions and so on that, that need it. We have consumed that based on some of the site conditions and grading work that happened out there and found some unforeseen conditions that, that resulted in a little bit more cost. What this action is, is taking project contingency, so not overall project contingency, and just adding contract authority for us to have owner-controlled contingency to pay to Skanska. This is the methodology by which you all allow us to have the flexibility, since you meet so infrequently, to deal with conditions as they arise. And there are certainly rules around that, and we've included the policy here. But this is not adding to the budget of the overall project. It's, it's moving from overall project contingency into these contracts for us to continue that work forward.
Any questions or clarifications on that? Okay, entertain a motion for 5D. So move from Mr. Kine?
Second.
Second from, I think that was Mr. Horn, okay, Mr. Hornsby. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, 5E, Professional Services Agreement with Facilities, Facility RX LLC for Move Management Consulting Services for the Bond Program on the Northwest and Southeast campuses in an amount not to exceed $1,611,311.
Yes. So this item was continued from last month to respond to some very good questions that the board asked, based on, on the, the large dollar cost of this exercise. As we've talked about, this has been, this is a very complex project that has a lot of moving parts. But I've got a quick slide deck to share with you. We've had the opportunity to meet with a, a couple of board members who had some specific questions, and we want to share some of the information that we provided there. It's coming?
I believe there's, there's some additional information at your desk there that
There is. There's, there's also a substitute board memo that I'll get to in just a moment that we are suggesting that you, you consider today. So real quickly, we'll cover, and I'm going to ask John Posh up here in just a moment to talk specifically about the moves. But we'll talk real quickly about the scope of services, and then we're going to use Northwest as an illustration of the complexity of what's going on. This is not a normal project where you build a building and you move into it. It's, you know, we're flying the plane while we build, demolish, move temporarily, and then move into permanent spaces, and so it adds to the complexity. In addition, we'll talk real quickly about the procurement method that we used, and then an alternative proposal that we have before you. So I've spent some time with the Facility RX folks as well to understand a little bit more about the role that they play. So they, they do the move planning and management, which involves a whole lot of, of planning and decisions around how furniture will be reutilized in swing spaces, how you'll manage power and IT infrastructure to those temporary locations, and to manage the risk on behalf of TCC during that process. I thought one of the things that was interesting that hadn't really occurred to me until we spent some time talking was even at Northwest, we're going to have to move food service to a temporary location and all the equipment associated with that. And so when you think about the complexity of that, when you think about the fact that we've got a separate vendor with vending machines all over our campuses, how do you coordinate with them? There's, there's a million tasks associated with it. So they, they provide that level of oversight. And we'll talk a little bit about what their interaction with the actual movers will be here in a moment when we get to an alternative proposal. But with this, I'd like to turn it over to John, just to walk you through the series of moves that will happen at Northwest as an illustration of the complexity.
Thank you. Hi, I'm John Posh. Good afternoon. I'm with Jacobs, and I'm the Bond Program Director for 2019 Bond. So yes, at Northwest and Southeast, lots of moves. There's a total of 46 moves that are going to take place over the next three years. So this is kind of an illustration of how things are going to progress. So what you see here, of course, the two striped buildings are the ones that are under construction now. So up at the top left, NW05, that's almost completed. It'll be done spring of '23. And the one at the bottom right, NW01, under construction, that'll be done in about a year. So the colored buildings that you see here with the initials are everything that's in play during these moves. So I'm going to walk you through this. So what we're calling Moves Number One and Two are going to take place in May 2023, when building NW05 is complete. So, and just, it's separate moves in the contract, but we've consolidated them into one event as our planning has evolved. So it's going to be from the WSTU and this whole series of buildings, and to NW05 when it's complete, and an assortment of other buildings. One of the key principles of this is the concept of swing space. So at both of these campuses, we, when we embarked on these projects, we knew that there's no swing space. So as we, that's why the moves and the construction sequence and the demolition at Northwest have to take place in a very sequenced, precise way. So, let's see, kind of going around the horn here, top left, you have NW05, you have WATB at the top, WFSC. There's some people that are going to be working from home temporarily for a few months. You have the three dotted buildings, which are going to be demolished. You have WCTS, which will ultimately be demolished, except we need it for swing space. So you can see there's still a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts. WACB on the left also is going to be used for, temporary for part of swing space. So, so I'm going to quickly flick through a series of arrows here, but this kind of illustrates the from and to. So we have a, a large matrix that shows every single person where they're going to move, from where they're going to, and all the details of when they're going to move. There's about 1,250 people over the next three years that are going to be impacted by this. And everybody's got, there's a plan for everybody. So just to start out, we've got people moving from CTS to the NW05 when it's complete, and a few people moving to WATB. Then, before we demolish WFAB, we've got a bunch of people moving out of there to four different places, including some that'll work from home temporarily. Then WSTU, before we demolish that, we've got several sets of people moving far and wide from that building. WTLO, we're going to be demolishing that, so of course we're moving people out of that building. And then WACB, we've got some people that are going to be permanently moving out of, out of that building. So this is what Moves One and Two look like. And as you can see, there's a lot of moving parts. There's a lot of planning that goes into this. It's, what, what our Move Management Consultant is going to be doing is planning the move, communicating that to all of these 1,250 people, setting things up, what I call quarterbacking the move when it actually happens, and then some after, after-event things, like a help desk that they're going to be setting up. That's okay. I'll stop.
I think I have an extra.
We, there's a substitute action.
So it's on its way. Sorry, John. We were just trying to get clarity around it.
That's what I was trying to figure out.
So I have two copies of 5D. I thought you all thought that I needed to read it twice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, John, go ahead and continue. That's fine.
Okay, thank you. So I give you Moves One and Two.
So my only comment, John, is I'm perhaps as bright as most, as many, not most. This is very complex.
Yes, it is.
And I imagine that you and the people that are doing this will do a very good job. So I'm, I'm ready to continue to listen.
Okay. Thank you.
So that's our, that's our first, thank you, and that's our first set of moves. So the, the third move is going to be in October 2023 at Northwest. So it's removing, it's, it's as we complete NW01, which is the large building, we're going to be doing another set of moves. So what that looks, so NW01, the yellow building at the bottom, is going to be completed next fall. The way we're sequencing this is the NW, the future, if you remember the three dotted buildings on the past slide, in this slide, those have already been demolished. So already being constructed, while, while NW01 is completed, are NW02 and NW03. So we actually saved five months over the overall schedule by sequencing it like this. So we can move people out into swing space, demolish those buildings, and get started on NW02 and NW03. So that worked out really well. So here, we're moving people into the completed NW01, and we are moving them out of WCTS. That's going to let us demolish WCTS. So then Move Four is the, the other permanent move. And so this is still, this, this will still, this is still to come. So this is at the end of the project, when all the buildings are complete, looking ahead to 2025. And this will be a subsequent proposal for this contract. And this will show you what that move looks like. So you see the two white buildings, NW02 and NW03. So three years from now, those buildings, which haven't started construction yet, will be complete, and we will move people out of swing space. Everybody moves into their final location.
I didn't, I didn't understand what you just said about subsequent...
I'll get to that. So, and actually, before I do, one of the things I'll mention that we've talked a lot about is that the potential schedule impacts and the risk and cost of that is a big factor in us having proposed, having professional help to guide all of this. In addition, we know that this will be the last thing a lot of our employees and our students remember in terms of how this felt and how it was executed, and so it's really critical that we get the right team in there to make it happen. But I'll talk to you a little bit about how we got to this proposal, and then also what our revised recommendation is at this point to be responsive to the concerns that were raised. So, we went through a procurement process where we did a request for qualifications, and the question was raised, in a request for qualifications, you select the most qualified vendor, and then you negotiate price. So, you don't receive pricing as part of their original proposals, in contrast to a request for proposals. Under state law, there are certain disciplines that you are required to do that. You are not allowed to ask for pricing until you've selected the most qualified vendor. And so, and the construction and this kind of work, there's a lot of those that apply here, so architecture, engineering, and so on. However, there's also a separate section that calls out interior design, and it's not whether they're a registered interior designer, it's whether they're doing interior design work, which in the commercial and office space, that's exactly what we're talking about, designing the space for student, for furniture to be moved in, how do you power it, how do you get IT there, how do you organize all of that? And so, it's our opinion that that makes sense, that this falls under this. And so, what we did is we received proposals and selected the most qualified vendor to negotiate with, and then I'll share with you what we went through to validate the pricing that they provided us. I will tell you that we only received two proposals, and that's been a challenge that we've had as of late with a lot of things that we do in terms of folks not having sufficient staff in many instances to propose. It goes out, it went out to more than 2,000 potential vendors that are registered as part of that commodity code. We had about 56 firms that downloaded the information or accessed the information in our bidding system. We actually reached out to a few of those to understand their reasoning for not submitting. Many of them, the size and complexity of this project was just too big. Some didn't have resources to even respond to the RFQ versus even being prepared to provide staffing later on. So, it speaks to how complex this is. We have also visited with some of the peer institutions to understand who have used services like this, that, we spoke to Dallas College in particular. Most of what they've done to date have been much less complex, and they have not used a service like this. However, they are anticipating that during their upcoming bond program, they're going to have some of the same challenges that we have, that they're considering that. There are other public entities that we have reached out to to understand and compare the pricing that we had, including some federal court buildings, hospital systems, the city of San Antonio as well, to look at the pricing there again to get some validation and comfort level. So, in terms of that, how we looked at the pricing as well, they have proposed a team of folks that will be assigned to this project, and these are the average pay rates. Some of these categories have more than one person in them, and so the average pay rates are not out of line with what we would have expected. It does not reflect that they also have a, you know, number of employer expenses that they pay on top of that. What they have reflected in that fee schedule is that they've got a calculated overhead and profit margin of 9.32%, which we felt like was in the realm of reasonable. One of the things I'll also tell you is that this contract was established based on time and materials, and so the intent all along is that, especially as we're dealing with other financial pressures associated with the program, is that we would run a really tight ship on this, and we would adjust and amend. They proposed a certain number of hours that they think that it will require, and generally, a proposer like this is going to err on the side of being able to absorb the risk of the unknowns. However, as we work together, our intent is to tighten that up and make sure that we only use hours that are required. So, the original proposal that we gave to you was to go ahead and award the complete contract. One of the things that we're endeavoring to do is to try to communicate sort of the big picture of the things that we're working on that are multi-year in nature. And so, we had anticipated both the Northwest and the Southeast moves covering a three-year period, and the total estimated price was 1.6 million. That was, again, a not-to-exceed amount, so it would only be based on the hours that they actually used. The controls, as I mentioned, would be us managing those assigned hours very tightly. The move services, we had anticipated we would bid directly by TCC with the support and guidance of the move consultant to help us develop that scope and to get the right team on board. The proposal modifies that just a little bit. What we're suggesting is that we basically do a master agreement and phase the authorization so we can come back and have some accountability to you all about how it's going. And also, my hope is, is that, again, as the vendor has more information for those future phases, it's an opportunity for us to tighten up that not-to-exceed amount to reflect that we've sort of carved out the risk and start driving that to what we hope the actual costs will be. And so, what we would do is bring, what we're proposing at this rate is to handle everything that would occur in 2023, which is the most urgent from a schedule standpoint. So, those first three moves that John mentioned, this does not include the final Northwest move in 2025, again, because that would be a future phase, nor does it include Southeast, which is occurring in 2024, and so we would bring that back to you as well. The other modification that I would mention after visiting with the Facility RX folks, we think it would make a lot of sense for them to actually subcontract the movers, and so we've got one firm to hold accountable for how all of that's going. So, they're directing the work of the mover. They would still be required to go through, because it's public money, a public procurement process, we would participate in that. We would use their expertise to select that mover and make sure it's priced appropriately, but then we don't have two potentially, you know, separate contracts that we're trying to hold accountable versus one where they sub that work, and we think that makes a lot of sense. So, what we would do is bring that change order back to the board in April. We think that doing just 2023 with this methodology will hopefully give you guys the comfort level that you need for the future years, that we'll bundle it together in that manner as well. We did talk a lot with the vendor about whether there would have been a difference if we had gone ahead and awarded the actual move contract at the same time that we did this, because we had heard that that might be a factor. And she actually said that they have a very specialized role, and most of the time, it ends up being separate companies. And if they were required at this phase with the amount of information they have to go ahead and price that move itself, or the portion for the movers, again, they would have baked in more risk into their pricing, and that probably would have been higher than what we'll be able to achieve as we move forward and go through this process where it's a secondary thing. We'd always intended for it to be secondary to when we award this contract, but this will restructure it just a little bit to add accountability. But, so, again, what we've done here is we're selecting the most qualified vendor, in our view, and then we'll bring it back in a series of authorizations. All of this cost was anticipated in the overall budget, and so we would recommend even forward. Because we posted this to this firm with this amount, we can lower the amount and have an alternative or amended motion to include the $609,176. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Ellenese. Questions, clarifications for Ms. Ellenese?
Do we have a copy of the action item?
Is it? Oh, yep. Frida will bring it around. I apologize. I emailed it yesterday, but some of you may not have seen that, but it's a red line.
I saw it, but I was looking for a copy of it.
Yeah, I apologize for then to have that.
Can I talk a second? Well.
Questions?
Thank you, Frida. No, there's no question in my mind that we need services of this type, and I appreciate the work that everybody's put into studying this and trying to come up with an alternative that the board could get comfortable with. I can't help but feel that part of our problem, if there are 2,000 vendors we sent it out to and we got two responses, that tells me that there's likely, possibly, something wrong with the way we went about it. I think a vendor is going to think long and hard about making a commitment over three or four years during these unstable times we're in, and I think a vendor would protect itself in this kind of situation. Am I correct that you all, our staff with Jacobs, will study the time and materials on this?
Absolutely.
Very carefully? And we can terminate this commitment?
Yes. This is not an obligation to spend all the money. It'll be paid for work performed.
I cannot help but believe that if we had put this in several packages where the project was not so big and strung out over such a long period of time, that we would have gotten a different result. I will reluctantly vote for this. I don't like it, and I think it really comes from the fact that we don't even have the moving services included at this point. We're talking about a lot of money. Talk a minute longer. I guess what you're saying about having them subcontract for the moving company is a responsibility and control situation.
I like that because that allows us to hold the move consultant responsible for managing how it's going and to manage the risk on our behalf. What became apparent as we talked, if for whatever reason the mover is not performing and is creating the issues, then it creates a little bit of a point of friction between the two of those about how you hold that accountable. So, we think that that actually provides a better structure.
So, we will do the bid. TCC will manage the bid?
We will work with them on it. So, because they will have to follow state law related to procurement processes, and so we'll facilitate that work, but then the subcontract will be directly between the two of them.
And that will be a move just for this first phase?
That's what we're doing for the first phase, and if we think it worked really well, then that's what we would recommend continuing with, and if we run into any issues with that, then we'll, but the initial move would be just this first phase. Yes, sir. And that'll come back to you as a change order, because then our agreement would be with Facility RX to pay for that cost.
Thank you for the explanation, and thank you for, I know this is, the questions we raised have created a lot of extra work. I understand that, but I think this plan, the $609,000 plan, and I understand what you're saying about including the actual move under this contract, that probably makes sense. I like the size of the actual move. I think we'll get some good response on that.
Yeah, I hope so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. Any other questions or clarifications? Mr. Kine, do you, no? You, go ahead.
I move to approve as amended.
Okay. For an amount of $609,176.
For an amount not to exceed $609,176.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Kine.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Hornsby. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you very much. We know there was a lot of effort put into this, and I want to thank the board members for asking some very difficult questions. We know there was a lot of effort that went into this, to have to do a little bit more digging, and we're not done. I know we're still looking, exploring ways that we can save money, but thank you very much.
It keeps us on our toes. We appreciate it.
That's right. Yes, thank you. Okay, let's see. Item 5F, the transfer of $3175,000 from Fund 10 to Fund 46 for a multi-year capital project for disaster recovery program. The service authorization from Candado Corporation for Professional Services in an amount, are those two together?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, I'm sorry. It's just so light in my book here. I can barely see it. Professional services in amount up to $537,974, and contract with Sequel Data Systems Inc. for pure storage in an amount up to $637,361. Ms. Ellenese?
So, this is another example of where our intent is to start doing a better job of managing IT projects that are capital in nature as an aggregate multi-year plan, rather than coming to you incrementally. And so, what we've done is we've identified a project, and this has to do with making our backup facility in Allen, not just a data storage and data recovery site, but also where we could fail over and fully operate our systems in the event that we needed to, and that's required under state law with some of the changes that have happened recently. And so, what this does is it'll transfer the funds out to a capital project fund where we can manage it and monitor it over multiple years. We've got a few expenditures that, as described in the board memo, that have already been occurring within our authority that's already been granted, that we will do journal entries to transfer over to the project to capture them. And then, we have two contracts that are proposed, are recommended for consideration right now. One is the professional services to finish the plan for all of the requirements of the hardware and such at the data center, and then also to help us plan for and execute two failover events over the course of the next year, where we actually get to test the effectiveness of all of that planning. In addition, there's hardware purchases of $637,000 that are listed there as well. But, again, this sort of reflects the new way that we're trying to do business by having a place to aggregate those capital costs into one location as a project.
Any questions or clarifications?
Just a comment. If I'm allowed to have a favorite fund, it's now Fund 46, so thank you for establishing that.
You got it.
Ms. Ellenese, do we, is this a complete redundancy, or is it just certain systems that we're creating a DR?
It's complete redundancy. I'm going to look for help here.
Okay.
So, the goal in most situations.
You don't mind introducing?
Dave Kellyworth, Executive Director of IT Business Administration and User Support.
Thanks.
The goal is 100% redundancy, but that has to be as part of the Candado and scene. We may have certain systems that don't fail over, but the whole idea is consistent, critical business continuity systems first, and then continue to iterate out till we have a goal as close to 100% redundancy as possible.
Do you know what the turnaround time is? Is there just like RTO, I think, or RPOs? Do you know what that?
You mean for, if a failover happens?
Right.
Ideally, the failover should be instantaneous.
Okay.
Because we're constantly connected. Several other projects you've approved links all the campuses together.
Okay.
And then, we would do a planned failback.
Okay.
So, it's not like when the fail trigger goes away, it automatically goes back. We have to effectively pull a lever and move everything back.
To move everything back, okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion. So, move from Dr. Morrison.
Second from Mr. Greenhill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion carries. We're in the monthly financial report.
That's right. So, because of the earlyness of our meeting this month, it's, we're a little challenged in terms of producing the report. You've got the financial statements, I believe, at your place. They were distributed as well. There are two items that our intent is to start providing, well, first of all, let me just tell you, we've, what we've done here on the summary is just to break out some of the use of fund balance and the transfers out that we've been talking about so that you can get a clear picture of how we're doing compared to our operations right now. So, our current income is only at 20.8%. That's normal. As you know, tax bills are due at the end of the year, and so January ends up being a big month for us as we receive that revenue, and so this is normal for that period of time. In addition, on the current expenses, we are at 32%, which seems slightly ahead, but that includes a lot of encumbrances for things that we've got in motion for the end of the year, so that is on track as well. The document that we developed last month, I'm going to email out to you when we have it available, which is the budget compared to actuals by functional area. However, one of the things that we're adding that I've been promising, because it's the end of a quarter, is that we've drafted a format for a summary informational memo that we'll distribute every quarter that gives a high-level overview of various things. And so, for example, the draft that we have this month includes itemization of the budget amendments that you've done. You know, unexpected revenue we may have received, also an analysis of how we're doing in spending and wages and salaries, so we can understand how we're performing there from a vacancy standpoint and that kind of thing. So, we've got a draft of that, but rather than rushing it out while we were still doing some quality control on that, I'm going to email that to you. And what I'd like to do is I will include that first quarter report in January to get it formally into the board's records, and then we'll also do a separate one for December so that you can see how that, and then we'll get into a rhythm of producing that for you every quarter, and I think it'll serve the needs that you've been asking. We also do not have an investment report yet today because it's only the eighth, and so we will have it for you shortly. You are also due for a quarterly update from PFM on our investments in January as well. You are also due for a quarterly update from PFM on our investments in January as well. Okay.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Allenese? Thank you. I'm gonna turn it over to you, Dr. LeBlanc, for the interim chancellor's report.
Yes, so first is the monthly bond report. Will John be giving that?
Actually, it's just the written report. And so it's there for your convenience and I believe they provide another update in January or February, probably February.
I think it's in February, yes.
So, very nice. In terms of, of the activities, so you mentioned the articulation agreements that we have with several universities within Texas and outside of Texas. So several of us attended the annual meeting of Southern Association Colleges and Schools in Atlanta. And we were able to combine that event with an articulation signing event at Morehouse College. Dr. Madison actually attended Morehouse College and they are very interested in recruiting our graduates. So we had a nice articulation agreement yesterday and it was at the Ray Charles Performing Arts Center, which was exciting for me since he's one of my favorite artists. You also, I've been keeping you informed of the Fort Worth Chamber of Commerce and our partnership with them. So you have additional information. We have a memorandum of agreement with them. And basically, the memorandum was to memorialize the agreement between Tarrant County College and the Fort Worth Chamber of Commerce. Our goal is to build and scale education and industry partnerships to strengthen regional workforce and education development ecosystems in support of a more competitive Texas workforce. So everything that we are doing impacts economic development and this partnership supports those efforts. In terms of meeting with legislators in preparation for the legislative session, we have a couple of things coming up. On January 26th, which is Community College Day, we are taking students to Austin and invite trustees to join us. Right now, we have approximately 40 students that are signed up to attend. Those are really fun days, but they're busy. We, the, the students go and speak to legislators and that's really extremely powerful. So I hope you think about joining us on that day. We also have a strong partnership with Dallas College and it's really a regional, learn, growing into a regional partnership with other community colleges. Tentatively, we have scheduled on February 21st, a legislative delegation joint event so that we will, as a region, meet with legislators to garner additional support for the community colleges. Right now is a very busy time for legislators and it's, it's a challenge even getting our phone calls returned, but we, Reginald is very persistent, so I appreciate his persistence on, on that. And we will have additional, we have some really important presentations in January that, at the January work session and the January board meeting. And I hope you look at the monthly planning calendar for that. And that's all I have.
Correct. Thank you for that and want to thank those board members that have been actively involved in setting up meetings and thank you, Mr. Gates, for setting up those legislative meetings with staff. Part of our work here as trustees, besides being fiduciaries and, and nurturing the college mission, we are advocating for the college and so this is a very, very important part of our work. And so we look forward to being in Austin and advocating for our college and also in February as well and, and Washington. All right, let's see. We will now go into closed session. The board will conduct a closed session meeting in order to discuss matters permitted by the following sections of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. Section 551 dot 071, consultation with attorney. Legal issues regarding any agenda item listed on today's district board meeting agenda. Or B, Section 551 dot 072, deliberations regarding real property. Section, C, Section 551 dot 074, deliberations on personnel matters. I, consideration of proposed form of chancellor's employment contract and consideration of offering the position of chancellor of Tarrant County College District to Dr. Elva LeBlanc. And D, Section 551 dot 076, deliberations on security devices or security audits. The board may reconvene an open session item and act on any of those items listed on the executive session in accordance with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. So we'll go ahead and go into closed session. Want to make sure that for those of you that may not be returning after we meet, just wish you all a very happy holiday and hope that you're able to get some much deserved downtime. We look forward to seeing you all again bright and ready to go in January. Thank you. Thank you.[133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84][133.84][music][133.84]